Well, you all I know is you are far.
So, I just go over the court.
I'd call over the committee of the whole meeting for May, May seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Present.
Vela.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Meehan.
Here.
Elliott.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Bone.
Here.
Fister, six present, one absent.
The first item on the agenda is the public forum addressing C D list to have any speakers, no speakers tonight. Next is the auto of accounts. Make a motion for the auto of accounts.
Make a motion. Auto of accounts, please.
Second.
Is anybody got any questions? I've got a couple. I haven't seen one of these for about four years at least, Sea Waltons. Under, let's see, this was under the wastewater treatment plant sale. Glory Law Firm, three thousand dollars, it's on page nine. The legal expenses. So, was the Glory Law Firm already under contract with us, or is this is after?
This was for services prior to the change of ownership.
So, why would we be paying them additional services?
This was work that was previously performed.
So, it was not under their contract already to do this? Well, I don't understand that they were already the corporate counselor.
Yeah, so they were billing time individually for demolitions.
So, demolition's not included in, wasn't part of their original scope?
No.
Under street maintenance, there's a stainless steel dump truck for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand. It was a capital expense. And then also, there's a similar question under the police, there's a capital expense for a twenty twenty-five Ford Interceptor. I'm just wondering, how are we already paying for capital expenses when we don't have a budget approved?
So, on the police interceptor that was paid for with the K nine funds, and I believe that was adopted prior to, so that is last year's item, so it wasn't coming out of general funds, it's coming out of K nine cash account.
And that was in last year's budget?
I believe so, yes. And, I'm sorry, the second one?
The second one was the capital expense for the stainless steel dump truck. Out of street maintenance, on page nine.
Yeah, that's a single axle dump truck that was actually ordered last year.
So, that was that last year's budget as well?
Alderman Vela, just a point of order, the K nine account is set up outside of the general fund. It is a, it is not a budgeted item. Those are all funds that are raised by the community to put toward K nine expenses.
Contributions, contributions and things.
So, they are separate from the budget. It was set up that way, I think, in two thousand fifteen.
Okay, it doesn't list that here, it just says it's out of street maintenance. Oh, excuse me, that was.
Alderman Vela.
Yeah, that's still, I'll just please.
Yeah, you are correct, because, because we do have a line that says K nine expense. And all K nine expense pretty much goes with that one line. However, since a vehicle is being purchased out of a K nine account, and it is a capital expense for auditing purposes, I wanted to make sure we tracked it as a true vehicle and not as a, an expense. So, therefore, I put it, I changed the coding to police capital expense so that it is recorded correctly as a fix, as an asset and not as an expense.
Okay, so you moved money then from the K nine to?
Whenever you, inside this, I didn't move any money, but however you can identify the cash account in which an expense is going to be paid out of, therefore, on that particular line item, the K nine cash account was selected. Therefore, if there is no movement, it comes strictly out of the K nine cash account.
Under building and zoning, we have, there's a bill for Frank Timmermeyer for inspections of thirty-one hundred. Is that somewhere he was under contract, not an employee yet?
Well, he's, it's under our professional services line item, he performs our electrical inspections.
So, he's not just a, he's not a regular employee, he's not a?
No, he builds hourly for inspection.
Under ARPA, there was a bill for hotel rooms and prescription.
Yes, there is a resolution for the benefit of the N house. And there was two hundred thousand dollars set aside where the police assist an house in various ways. And it could be buying a dinner, it could be housing for a evening or whatever. And so, those are those expenses. Not all of those, part of those are the Haskell house, so two of those are the Haskell house. And one of those is for equipment. The bottom three are the equipment for vehicles, for police vehicles, for the partial outfitting them. That's also approved in a prior resolution for ARPA.
There's, it looks like there's two more under economic development, there's a trip to Washington DC. What was the purpose of that trip?
We were awarded a grant, so Mr. Janek and the mayor attended it. I personally accepted a grant award on behalf of the city.
And then the last one I had was, I was under the, I think it was under the mayors. There's a three thousand dollar bill for, like, River Cities.
And a Mississippi Rivers Towns and Cities Initiative membership and a membership.
What is that exactly?
It's a, it's a membership of mayors up, up and down Mississippi River. Basically, it's, it's probably over a hundred mayors. We're all mayors of Mississippi River town and our sole focus is on the Mississippi River. And there's an upper river group, there's a middle river group, and then there's a lower Mississippi River group. And we're all basically in this, in this group. And through MRCTI, there are, there's funding available, there are resources available in emergency services. And I was elected as the Illinois State Chair. And so, I've been a member of this for, for several years now.
So, what's the benefit of the group, I guess? What's the benefit of being a member?
The benefit is that when there are, just like, when, just like with the disaster declarations, say, for instance, like Saint Louis got hit with the tornadoes. As, as Saint Louis, being a member city, was able to receive supportive, supportive funding on behalf of MRCTI. And in the past, any, any city, mid river, town on the Mississippi River that gets hit with flooding, there are, there are, there are funds available for that as well. So, I think it's a viable group to be a part of.
Well, this is asking, I wasn't aware of it, wasn't, I think we were part of it before.
Yeah.
Was Walker part of it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have. Anybody else got any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Next on the agenda is the resolution authorizing the closure of Bell Street to facilitate the F one racing pit party on Saturday, July eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the closure of Bell Street to facilitate the Marquette and Alton nineteen eighties class reunion on Saturday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
My second.
Is there any questions? Roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item seven, resolution authorizing the closure of Bell Street to facilitate the all sixties and seventies class reunion on Saturday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item eight, resolution, the bid submitted by Jonas Janik has been subject to appropriate review upon the recommendation of planning and development staff that the mayor and appropriate staff are hereby authorized to effectuate the sale of said property. Is there a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Well, you gotta get it on the floor first.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Now, you can ask a question.
So, I drove back there, so how do you know what lot it is? I mean, it is a dead end both ways, but there's a tree across the road.
Well, certainly, the property is identified by parcel number, so we are aware of what property is.
Is it the corner?
That was kind of the deal with the lot, bid block, and Mr. Janik is the adjacent property owner, he knows the lot.
Did the tree fall, or do we know?
Where the bound tree is is a subject property.
I know. I read all that, I drove very well.
Is there any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item nine, resolution to commence with demolition proceedings concerning two zero two East Seventh Street.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item ten, resolution approving request to sell and or serve alcohol at the fireworks fundraiser at Saint Mary's Catholic Church on Thursday, July third, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions? Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item eleven, resolution to commence with demolition proceedings concerning eight zero three Highland Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item twelve, resolution authorizing the closure of Park Drive to facilitate a family reunion on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, which, which park, there's, is that the one off College Avenue?
Off Brown.
Off Brown. Lovely little block with the smaller homes? Okay. So, is this a particular family that's attempting to have a gathering?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item thirteen, resolution, a redevelopment agreement with the Frontier Furnishings Company, Inc., pursuant to the terms of the Alton Tax Increment Finance Grant Program for parcel index number twenty-three dash two dash zero seven dash twelve dash nineteen dash four zero five dash zero zero five point zero zero two, commonly known as fourteen twenty-three Pearl Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? I have one question. So, the, at the, I think it was at the end of it, it says, the low bid. I'm curious, who are the other bidders? Is there a bidder's list?
Well, the property owners solicit bids on their own, so if required, then they submit for rebids for the sub projects. They not only were able to obtain a few bids, but I can sort of provide this.
Okay. You'll send that, I guess, tomorrow or before Wednesday's meeting?
I can send it in the morning, yes.
Um, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item fourteen, resolution to commence with demolition proceedings concerning twenty-six twenty Saloo Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Vela.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister, six ayes, no nays, one absent.
Item fifteen, resolution authorizing the adoption of the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning April first, two thousand twenty-five and ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions? I still have a question. I, I, I don't understand this at all. I don't understand how we have an appropriation of one hundred and forty-eight million dollars. Can you explain this process? Because in the twelve years I was Alderman for, we never put out a budget like this. I just don't understand it. Because they get, my understanding is that this would give the department heads and the mayor the right to spend up to one hundred and forty-eight million.
So, per state statute from nineteen sixty-five, this is a requirement to file this. And secondly, according to the Illinois municipal handbook, it, it does state that you as city officials are supposed to be able to identify the maximum amount that would be feasible, that could be spent in a particular area. So, it, although it's kind of confusing for residents and people that aren't familiar with appropriation ordinance, how this would be, you as public officials should do so. If I quote this, the appropriation ordinance serves as a limit on what a public entity may spend during a current fiscal year. It is, in effect, the statement of a maximum amount that a municipality could spend if funds were available. Consequently, in drafting this ordinance, officials must anticipate all possible expenditures during the coming year. Because of this reality, the appropriation may exceed the amounts that could actually be exceeded and spent. I'm also paraphrasing, this inflation of line items may often be difficult to explain to residents who are not familiar with the process. It is very helpful to explain the differences between the appropriation and the internal budget. So, that is exactly the, the best practice that Alton has adopted, is that we prepare appropriations so that it represents the maximum amount of money that can be spent on each line item. And then we also prepare administrative budget that is a, down to the nitty gritty or fine tuned in a way that we can use as a management tool. In doing so, we have avoided the findings that were being issued in our audits that said that we were exceeding our budgets. So, in order to put Alton in the best light in our audits, as well as creating a good management tool, we now prepare two separate documents. If you have any specific questions on any of the line items, we can be happy to discuss those. But a broad question, I can't really fine tune exactly what, what your, not an understanding is.
What did the total appropriations look like last year compared to this year?
I don't have that number, if you can look it on our website, and that is available there, but I would say it'd be a comparable amount.
So, it was one forty eight last year?
I don't know the dollar amount, but it would be a similar amount.
When would be, so you're saying that the city would then be passing an administrative, administrative budget then that they would adhere to?
That is correct.
All right, and when will that budget be ready?
Uh, we have, uh, been working on it for quite some time, um, unfortunately, all of the department heads aren't in place, and the ones that we do have in place have only been here less than two weeks. So, um, I have spent most of the day in budget meetings with a department head, with two of them, and, um, I, we are also kind of, um. Awaiting the results of the compensation study, um, it is, I believe it's being towards this end of the final stages, and, uh. That is kind of a time sensitive study, therefore, uh, if we were to continue without those results, by next year, those, uh, results will be stale. And my, the city has invested in this study, therefore, I think it improves us to, um, take advantage of the results when we're this close.
And Debbie, if I can add, um, excuse me, it's a proactive approach in just being ready for the unexpected, um, basically, that's what it is. The appropriation is.
I mean, there'd be no way we could ever spend that sort of money. Um, so you don't have a timeline, when do you, have you started any, I mean, with the, the old council, like, but, do they, you guys still do budget meetings with the council?
Uh, we, we prepare a budget internally based upon, um, the goals of, of the departments, and then if you would like, we can do two by twos as well.
Yeah, I, I would definitely like that.
Okay. We can ask it.
All right. Uh, anybody else having questions? Madam clerk, roll call please.
Vella.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister. Six i's, no n's, one absent.
Item sixteen, bid report and resolution be resolved by the City Council of City of Alton, Illinois, that the best bid of Midwest industrial contractors for demolition of twenty seven zero seven Beulyn Street and twenty eight twenty Resident Street in an amount of nineteen thousand. Be awarded for bid number twenty twenty five dash thirteen for building and zoning department.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Madam clerk, roll call please.
Vella.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister. Six i's, no n's, one absent.
Item seventeen, bid report and resolution be resolved by the City Council of City of Alton, Illinois, that the best bid of Environmental Remediation Services, LLC, for asbestos removal at thirty two zero nine Hillcrest Avenue, in an amount of twenty three fifty. Be awarded for bid number twenty twenty five dash fourteen for building and zoning department.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Questions, madam clerk, roll call please.
Vella.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Meehan.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister. Six i's, no n's, one absent.
Does anybody have anything they want to add?
I do, I sent a, um, email to, um, our Public Works Department, I'm starting there, and to our mayor concerning, um. The wildlife, the abundance of wildlife within my neighborhoods, uh, we have deers walking in the middle of the street, coyotes just. Look like they're just coming into that area because they're being, you know, the, the woods and everything is being tear, torn down. So, I have a concern because we have a lot of children and pets, and that type of thing within our community, and I would hate for something to happen, so I did ask if, uh, we could. Bring in someone to kind of look at our city or at our area to make sure that nothing strange is going on with all these different animals kind of congregating within. Send it to the mayor.
Yeah.
Well, I have red foxes, I'm just telling you, I have red foxes running around my neighborhood like crazy.
Turkey, foxes.
Yeah, I have, I have deer, uh, the coyotes.
Your concern was deer on Central Avenue, we can put up, there are a couple spots in Central where the deer commonly cross, we can put up, uh, signs that are deer crossing, similar to what we have on, like, College Avenue or Rock Springs.
But it's kind of more motorist, uh. There's wildlife moving in, a lot of times they'll move in because they find a food source, uh, whether they're getting in the trash like erectments and, and boxes and stuff, but they find a food source, that source, they'll stay in that area, and so.
Uh, maybe, maybe they're, they're finding something in that area that's attracting them.
I think it's bigger than that. Um, and I would love to see if we can bring a conservationist in to kind of see what's really going on.
Anybody else?
And also, I didn't just want the deer sign in front of Central, there, there were several streets that I did get.
That's it, being adjourned.
I gotta make a motion. Sorry.
Slow down.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we got a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. We can get the hammer.
Call the roll.
A roll.
Vella.
You should say, be the figure.
Aye. Meehan.
Aye.
Elliot.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Bone.
Aye.
Fister. Six i's, no n's, one absent.
Me adjourned.
There you go.
Yeah, you can.